Okay, by the clock on the wall. It's 6:30. Stand and join us in the pleasure of reading this. Pleasure to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome all. First on the agenda is a joint meeting with the planning board and the housing authority to review and accept input for the inclusionary bylaw, inclusionary zoning bylaw. Who would like to go first?
I can give a little bit of a discussion.
I've been ready, BJ.
This process started after we had a housing plan done and housing needs assessment plan which was done through PBBC. And we did a very clear assessment on what the requirements are to prevent any comprehensive permit bypassing all the bylaws and everything. And what is our inventory at this time and what progress that we may have. And throughout the years, you know, our housing inventory has gone up. We are over 2,000 units now. And to prevent any comprehensive permit bypassing any bylaws and everything, we're going to do at least 10% of the inventory for affordable housing. So that means that we have these 200 houses here which need with affordable housing definitions. And what we have, and for years what we have, we've had is 44 units. There are 40 units on the Collin Highway Act. And there are 40 units that we have which are allocated under housing for the disabled. The DDM has managed housing. Housing has been done. And there has not been any progress. So one of the recommendations from our housing plan was that we have housing.
Hello, sorry. Yes, my work.
One of the recommendations from our housing plan was, there are several recommendations I'm saying they did work on. One of the recommendations was street use and community zoning bylaw. And that the process started, and we started that process, we saw, looking at what's available and what has been done all over Massachusetts and studying what has worked. And then working with planning boards. And we've had at least eight meetings so far. So it's been almost eight months. And the result is the document that, I'm sure you have a copy of that? You have a copy or you didn't copy?
I have a copy.
You have a copy of it? You do need a copy.
Thank you.
It's a draft that we've done. And this is the first time that we're doing so before we're talking on spending money for legal review and everything, we want to get input from you and see who we believe can do any changes or not. Planning board has been extremely helpful and Jane also helped us as a consultant from PBBC in understanding the type of requirement. So we divided this into two, and is that a case here? Yeah, first of all.
Can I see? Because I think I was going to sort of go along with this. Thank you. The, did you guys all get a chance to read?
I looked at.
Do you guys have any questions for someone after that that you want to sort of discuss? Do you want me to sort of run through it and then you can bring us that one away? The beginning, the basic part of it is that, sorry, I've just got myself here. There's a trigger point basically, once a developer is choosing to develop five or more properties into houses or 15,000 square feet of livable housing. And once they hit that mark, then that triggers the inclusionary zoning bylaw that triggers all this. I'm sorry, I'm...
Hey, Rachel. You sound like...
Okay, so that's in the section three.
Takes a little time, it takes a night of voting.
I'm going to chop now.
Okay, but keep on adding stuff. The reason is we talked about, you know, five dwelling units or 15,000 square feet. Because five dwelling units could be three dwelling units because those big houses, 3,000, 5,000 square feet house, it couldn't meet that. So that's why the trigger, we did it either or way, which was kind of different from other housing authorities and different from other towns that bylaws will be studied.
Yeah, that was my question. It's 15,000 square feet of living space.
Living space.
So then if you have like the lots over on Brickyard Road or what's that? The Gilbert Road is right now where they just put all the land for sale down there. There's four lots there. So if somebody bought the four lots and they could slide right underneath the trigger point by putting four houses there because we're saying five or more. But if they were four humongous houses, we'd like to be able to see some affordable housing come out.
Well, I mean, they could take those four and put 2,000 square foot houses on there, it'd be eight, so 3,000 square foot houses would trigger. I don't know if they'd be humongous, but they'd be large.
Sure, sure. So and this is all, you know, it's a working document. If you got, we're open to suggestions because we really want to make it work for the town.
Well, one question I have at this point, what has been the average number of square foot in the last three, say, the last three years on average? Because there's some pretty big houses been built.
Yes.
You know, I mean, as compared to probably 10 years prior to it, the square footage is nowhere near it.
Right.
The other issue would be the five dwelling units. We'd have somebody playing games with dwelling units. In the early days of my time on this was planning board, five units was probably most of the, they were all 500-foot cul-de-sacs with probably five.
Well, we thought about that. And I'm John Furman from the planning board, by the way. And one of the things that we did is, as we said as a group, it said, how can someone get under that radar? So not diving into all the details here, but from an A&R process, you know, we have a lot of farmland here that has, you know, thousands of feet of frontage. And what we see is someone coming in, doing one or two A&R plans, and then going away and a couple of years later, coming in and doing another couple of A&R plans. So I believe we set a five-year limit.
3.1K. The last line over there says the A&R plan.
Yeah, A&R plan. So if you come in, what happens is that now we're going to, we need to amend the Form A application so that we include what the parent parcel is. So you have a large parcel starting over. We have a booking page of that. So many A&R's two plans, lots that go away, that come in two years later, you know, they have the same booking page number on it. So then we tee that and keep a running total. So just to prevent that segmentation of projects which would always slip under the radar.
I mean, that's, I mean, somebody's, some farmer's retirement plan is to do one A&R every once in a while.
Right.
Well, how's the frontage lots where you have a lot of farmland, they don't develop the back, they don't develop the frontage lots?
Right.
That falls into your radar.
That's the A&R part of it, the Form A, the Form A piece. We also realize that, you know, there could be some subdivisions that are going on here that also we don't want to ruin anything for any families in here. So if a farmer comes in and he wants to A&R a plan and then he wants to give that to his son or daughter and then keeps coming back and doing that, there's provision that would have to be added to the D that there's a certain ownership that has to be maintained for a certain amount of time to get out of doing that. If he just wants to keep it in the family and just part of all process. So it is a taken insensitive approach to this. We've kind of gone through it and we think we've covered a lot of the scenarios that are actually real and actually could come in. But the subdivision is a perfect one. So we just did Deer Run Estates, it had four lots. That would slip under the radar, four lots.
But technically, if they build more than 15,000 square feet of housing, so three of the lots have 2,000 square foot, or 5,000, whatever, I can't do the math all of a sudden. But 15,000 square feet, you'd be...
Yeah, the process that we have to do is manage that through the building permit.
I was just going to say, it's going to be out of your bailiwick by the time the 15,000 square feet is decided.
Yeah, we get the initial, the planning board gets the initial review through the A&R process or through the subdivision, subdivision process.
What are you going to do, and someone might come up with the idea, they'll build a house that's expandable. So on the initial go around, it's going to be 3,000 square feet. And, you know, a year after the permit is given, there's a...
Building permit issue? Yeah. I don't know that we've covered that one.
Yeah, well, in 3.1K, we were talking about that, you know, whether by reconstruction or alteration expense and reconstruction. So we tried to cover as much as we could. In the beginning part, then you'll see that we will, you know, be triggering color all day and you have to have a good day.
Oh, yeah, you can't cover them. Someone will find a way around them.
Yeah, it's still going to be open to some creative money. We're talking about...
Do we define what living space is? It'd be my next question. Because we don't want to be fighting over what living space is.
Correct.
I mean, is that, is that a finished room in the basement? Is that a less than full ceiling height room on a third floor loft that doesn't get included?
I think, don't real estate, realtors have some kind of standard what living space is?
Whatever the standard is, it should be adopted into this so that we know what we mean by 15,000 square.
I think that's the purpose of the definitions that you see in section two.
I mean, even if we adopt them.
I don't think, once the house is built, you have to have the controls after that.
Right, yeah. Well, we have been working with the building inspector to establish controls because what we are doing now is at any time a building permit is issued for anything other than like a fence or a shed, it is always given to the planning board right now. We've been working with him over the last year and a half, two years to make sure we sign off on it. We used to be dealing with for zoning issues, setbacks, things like that, but then we realized that's really his function. Where we look at it for is from stormwater management perspective to make sure that they're not disturbing 40,000 square feet. So this will just be another checkbox on it, you know. We have the parent parcel again listed. We look at it, we're going to, we're setting up a database that shows, you know, we've already issued a building permit on this. So as we go forward, we see these building permits come in, we click them off. So, you know, we're starting to lay the groundwork between all the departments here to actually work together and manage this.
Well, I see it. I personally have been working with our subdivision bylaws and I think they're archaic and they're out of whack. And I really think they should be brought to snuff in conjunction with this at the same time.
And actually, there's a master plan. That's one of the implementation things on the master plan is that the subdivision zoning regs be gone through.
Because, I mean, years ago, the five-foot cul-de-sac was for any other purpose was to slow down growth. And from my perspective, from a DPW perspective, it's a lot more to do a little five-foot cul-de-sac than a 1,000-foot cul-de-sac or so on. But it's more effort put in there, more time put in there, and sometimes a lot more maintenance.
Yeah. So that is actually something we'll be implementing as part of the master plan is going through. It was a lot of work and a lot of regulations and stuff that were set in the town have been ignored for years. And Jane commented when she was putting this together, trying to find a, the number for the, this bylaw here as we approve a bylaw. We don't know what the next number is, so we just give it a big space. So we go from like, you know, 10 to 15 and there's no 11s and 14s between it, just because we don't know where things are. So it does need to be have gone through and be updated.
Just as curiosity, I understand the altruistic reasons for the bylaw, you know, expanding housing and diversity and that sort of thing. But what's the balance in sense that, is there a balance in sense, cost or benefit to us?
I don't think that it's going to cost us anything as far as the town goes, but there are incentives that are implemented which, it's a mandatory bylaw. So if you're coming in and you're hitting those thresholds, you're in it whether you want to be or not. There are buyout options for it, so if you don't want to do this, then there's a calculation the planning board and the housing authority would do that would then say you're either going to give a suitable piece of land in lieu of that or you're going to give cash. Either of those two things would be given to either a land trust that has managed that or through the CPA housing component.
So four different options that we're giving.
And I saw that, but here's my next question. We do those, those obviously add, if he gives you a piece of land or if he gives you a donation, it makes the remaining three or four lots that he sells market rate that much more expensive. So aren't we in fact driving the cost of the balance of the housing up higher and making ourselves less affordable in an attempt to get a bit of affordable housing? I'm just asking the question.
Potentially, but the affordable housing is not like necessarily low income housing. You know, affordable housing is, 25% of the people who already live in Southampton qualify for affordable housing. It's more just making it official.
Right, but in a hypothetical situation, this kicks in at what, we say five lots?
Five lots.
So you come in with a five-lot subdivision, you have, and making an assumption that each of the lots is $100,000. He opts out of, he opts to give you a parcel of land, which is essentially $100,000 donation to the town, that now gets spread over the remaining four lots, making those last four lots instead of 100 to a developer, that ain't going away. He's going to make those lots 100 and a quarter to make up for what he just gave.
I think there's a lot of product that's left on planning board. So when we come up with this plan and then planning board is going to have to evaluate whether this is something that's worth it for town to be engaging or not.
But I thought it was an automatic, you couldn't escape it.
Yeah, there's, well, and there is a thing, I mean, the cash in lieu of implementation is an option available. It's not preferred because then what that does, it puts a burden on the housing authority and the management to do something that might need to buy affordable housing. As an incentive for doing that later on in the bylaw, what it does is it allows, it says that if you elect to do affordable housing, you can, we're giving you some benefits in order to that. We're making, it'll allow you to make the lots a little smaller so that you can increase the number of lots that you have over what you would normally have. So if you have a five-lot subdivision, you're giving us one lot, we're allowing you to decrease the burden of the rest to gain a lot back under a normal thing. So we're trying to...
But don't you have to take in consideration septic systems, bedrooms and space? And all that into it? So I'm a little wary about cutting down the size of lots.
It's been a density bonus.
Yeah, this is all worked together under the zoning bylaw. Because as you go through, when we approve a subdivision, we require as part of the subdivision regulations, a review by the Board of Health. And the subdivision plans actually have to have port tests and then spot areas for where septic systems can be replaced. So a subdivision, someone, a developer coming in, isn't coming in and submitting this plan and then all of a sudden he's surprised by it. So he's already done his homework, he knows he's got to do this. So when the subdivision comes to us, Board of Health has already looked at it and they know they can get the amount of septic systems and setbacks in there. The biggest benefit we have right now is that most of the areas we have are already watered. So the 100-foot setback between subdivision setbacks, I mean, between septic system setbacks and wells has gone away. So now we're only looking at property line setbacks or setbacks between reach fields, which helps out quite a bit.
Or the butters.
The butters, yeah. You know, and again, that's all part of the due diligence of doing this. So we won't be approving, we put ourselves in an awkward position by approving a subdivision that allows for decreased frontages and then not having to be able to build it because there's not enough room for septic systems. So that all has, is part of the due diligence. And again, getting back to your original comment, the subdivision regulations may have to be amended to say that we actually need to be more thought out on our septic system components when they submit versus just kind of coming in and winging it and assuming it's going to work, so.
But you said most of the work you're seeing is already with town watered.
Well, we haven't seen anything yet.
No, I know that saying, but how much of the town is, actually has water?
Probably about 60% of the town.
60%?
Yeah.
There's options which are, you know, we're making those available instead of affordable unit increases. And if it's only between five to nine units, if that falls into the fracas, what do you do, 10%? Then 10 units makes one affordable housing unit. So once you reach to that threshold of 10, then we're requesting, we're asking that there are no other options available. We're going more with, you know, create some affordable housing unit. So I think all those options, they can come up with plans, and planning board is going to have to sit down in sight on what exactly is working well for us. We want to balance it out.
I have a question. So there's 44 units of affordable housing presently? And how long have we only had 44 units?
Oh, for a long time, we've had only 44. There has not been, 40 units are the apartments, metals, and 40 units are the...
And your target is 10%, which you said is 200.
200.
So 156 units, how long do you think, are you projecting that this is going to take to, you know, move us?
Very long time. The thing is that what we require is that with the housing needs assessment plan, what we require is that we do an increase of 10% on the yearly basis, do we do that? But since we did this plan, that's what we do, technically, the system is 45% or something. So you only got 10%, 156, that's what you're behind. 10% with 15 units on a yearly basis, then you do it.
Right.
Okay, provided that you have a plan. But since we did this plan, we have, we are granted, when the plan gets approved, we are granted to 0.5% increase for the yearly basis, right, to so long. So, but 0.5% is also going to be at least 78 units a year, which is not going to...
So that's what our, that's the limitation or that's what we can do and be okay within the standard just by allocating, that's a minimum.
But if we do that much, then we have a leverage to stop any comprehensive permit, which is going to, you know, demand passable by law.
Of course, you have to have applications coming in. I mean, two years ago, the planning board had no subdivisions and I think we had six A&Rs, seven A&Rs coming in. So under that scenario, that whole year would have gone by with absolutely nothing coming in. This year, we've seen an uptick in A&R plans. We've seen some coming in that are repeats, but we're going to, we haven't been tracking what we're calling in this thing as the parent parcel to see whether they're going, you know, coming off the same piece. So, you know, once this gets approved, that record tracking piece of it will then start to take place. It will take some time, but, you know, as we referenced, having the ability to have and start tracking this and showing efforts to increase affordable housing will help kind of stutter off that.
How are we able to not have affordable housing all these years? What kind of penalties did we incur or how did we?
We probably, not that we probably were in line for them, but we could have had, we scored lower on grant applications.
We don't get, we don't get the points we need on grant applications. Depending on why it's, you probably...
So that's a huge incentive.
Yeah, but the realistic part of it is lots in Southampton run over $100,000 a piece and they're not going to put a $50,000 house on it.
Right, but we're not talking about $50,000.
No, but when you put the house and land together, we're talking 175 to 180,000. So you know what I'm saying?
The point is that, you know, Southampton has already reached that limit, it's over the age of 10%. And you have, you're sampling now that you see with all the stuff going on with...
So we're behind?
Yes. House District, Southampton hasn't reached yet. And that's, you know, you underlined a lot of opposition about the House District project, which is still going there forward because they can't deny that. So we're far behind and the communities surrounding us are already getting saturated. And we see that, three things basically, is that this is something that we need to do through a plan, second thing is that, you know, we need to do something for our elderly in the town who, you know, are not able to afford food, to live and maintain their houses, provide some people there. And for the elderly, there was a, there's something to make about, that's how we see that we have.
If, I figured what you said though, if we pass the bylaw, we get a bump in the...
Well, I can explain. I guess there's two different facts. So the map in front of you is showing the, where every town is in our region at with their 10% Chapter 40B state goals. So what BJ's referring to is the fact that this town of Southampton is actually one of the, I think, only communities in the region right now with a state-approved housing plan. And the benefit of having a state-approved housing plan is that if the town were to increase their affordable housing supply by, not, you know, from 1.9% to 10%, but by a small fraction every year, that they show incremental progress, that potentially the town, if they do show incremental progress, if things were created under the inclusionary zoning bylaw or Habitat project goes in or anything, deep restricted units, then the town could be eligible, well, that could be, they would be exempt from Chapter 40B comprehensive permit for, I think, just for a year. So that's a new, this is a new program, state, I think, I knew like in the last 10 years the state put it in place because they recognized that it is difficult for communities to go from, you know, 1.9% up to 10%. I mean, it's almost, just not going to happen overnight. It doesn't even happen over 10 years usually. So this is a way for towns like Southampton to get those bonus points when they do grant applications to the state and for other things to show that we are, you are making progress. But yeah, you're not jumping from 1.9 to 10%.
So do we survey 2,000 housing units?
Yes. Last count was a little over 2,000.
Yeah, I don't know.
A little over 2,000. And on an average, you could have new building permits. You know, last year was low, but the median average is about 30, 20.
We only have three people per housing unit?
New building on average?
About 20 and a half, yeah.
Wow.
And we did the survey down for housing density, it was 2.75 people.
Less than three people per housing unit. With big houses, don't have anybody living in them.
So knowing that you have other, I didn't tell you, I was the end of the year. So what we're looking for is that, we're hoping to see if you had any comments, suggestions moving forward. Our next steps are going to be that we are going to send this either before we get comments from you or simultaneous getting comments from you to a cul-de-sac page and have this reviewed for consistency with our bylaw. The planning board has an account where we're going to pay for that out of that. So it'll cost us money, it won't cost you guys any money. And then from that, once we get the comments back, what we'll be doing is we have to actually advertise this going through the channels for having it enacted as a bylaw. All the work sessions that we've done, we put a notice in the paper to say we're going to be starting conducting these work sessions. We didn't have anyone from the public really show up even though that they're advertised and always on the agenda. But then, once we get this done, we're going to advertise it, we'll have a public meeting. I envision it's going to be a one-meeting thing because we have already got all the issues worked out amongst all the departments. And then what we'll do then is put a report together and then recommend it for town meeting by the Board of Health.
We've done a balance over here, you know, plus in the beginning, we see that all the districts in today have yours. And then you see the incentives also. So we didn't want to, you know, discourage people from, you know, building the development over here. We want to balance it out in some way that we can, we can do both, we can get both calls.
Just a point of information, I remember several years ago, Mike was the chairman of the housing, the housing planning board. There was a bylaw change that came up. And it went down in flames because of lack of not addressing certain fears. And it was, you know, over meals and stuff like that. But my suggestion to you is have a couple informational hearings and talk about these things. And even before this comes up as a bylaw, though, have another meeting to refresh it and to educate the people. And there's always going to be questions that come up, you know, prepared for, but by having these sessions, it helps out.
That's agreed. Because when we first started the process, that was the planning board's question to the housing authorities that are, we're sure the town wants this. And then as a result of the master plan meetings they had and then the study that we did on housing, everyone who participated in those processes realized that this was a problem. So there was already a motion kind of sent forward that it was something we needed to do. And that's when we got the...
Am I right or wrong, but is this a two-thirds vote? I thought it was.
I think so.
Yeah, bylaws are two-thirds.
I think you'll be surprised to see when the opposition rises. It won't be at your public meetings, it won't be at your hearings, it'll be at the town meeting.
Yeah.
And it'll be from left field, it'll be from wherever you didn't think it was going to come from. But, you know, the more public information sessions you have, better off, it's going to be the plan, it's going to be the people that are affected, you know.
Yeah, it's developers.
Developers and landowners who are going to look at their complications of dealing with it.
I have a question.
Yes, you're silent.
I was curious about provision number six, provisions applicable to affordable housing units on and off-site. Number four. Number four, marketing plan for affordable units. Applicants under this bylaw shall submit a marketing plan or other method approved by Southampton, approved by Southampton through its local comprehensive plan to the planning board for its approval, which describes how the affordable units will be marketed to potential home buyers or tenants. This plan shall include a description or lottery of other classes to be used for selected buyers or tenants. So my question is, what are the provisions and what do you foresee as being eligible to be in these affordable units?
I think it's based strictly on income. I think it's based on the statewide average, correct?
No, it's a Springfield 80%. Medium income adjusted for household size for the Springfield Metropolitan, so it's just a 30%.
Yep, it's all towns in Hampshire County, it's the... Yep, it's all towns in Hampden Hampshire County. It's the, it's the Springfield Metropolitan Statistical Area is the, is the, is what's used by all affordable housing development that goes on in the entire region. So, whether you're in Amherst, whether you're in...
How many county, what counties is that?
Hampden Hampshire.
Hampden Hampshire.
Hampden Hampshire, yeah. So, it's the regional median household income, and then it's set by HUD.
Okay.
So, it's, it's eighty percent of that. But I guess what this, this is saying is, how, the marketing plan is how you're marketing to those houses that are eligible. You have to have a marketing plan, and has to be affirmatively marketed, these, these units, in order for them to count on the town's subsidized housing inventory with that one point nine percent number. You don't have, if the developer doesn't have a marketing plan, then these units wouldn't be eligible. So, that's, again, playing out.
So, we're pushing this off onto the developer, we're pushing off the marketing plan to the affordable housing onto the developer?
Yeah, absolutely. And then, the part of this is that there's a, actually, there's a mandatory piece of this after the approval, in which is where the housing authority comes in. So, as these marketing plans get implemented, someone from the housing authority, yet to be designated, then follows up on this, makes sure that what was put forward in the marketing plan is actually adhered to.
Are you finding that these, the people that are coming in to develop land in Southampton, in my, in my experience, were always small-time developers. They're not the large-scale people who are gonna be able to deal with this kind of thing.
Well, typically, in that situation, I mean, the developer, that, that developer doesn't do the marketing plan, they would just contract an agency that does that.
You lay a hat for them?
Well, not even about that, but there's other organizations that...
I'm just thinking, that's another process gonna get added into those other lots that are...
But Mike, in the last ten years, I would say, there was two, two subdivisions over thirty lots apiece.
Yeah.
Those are sizable lots.
Yeah, but I, but that's not the majority going...
That's not a major developer coming in with a fifty million dollar project. It's a large project for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this is, the marketing has to be a piece for accessibility. If you don't market, people won't know that these are rare. I mean, that's just part of the whole...
And you can't have to just give it to somebody, you know, to their grandma.
Right. We have to be able to say the ad hoc and not just...
Thinking of the developers that I was familiar with dealing with for, I don't remember any board.
More trouble than it starts.
Yeah. You know, for some guy who's, who makes a decent living, but isn't any kind of large-scale developer, who might come in and do one project every few years and develops maybe five to ten houses, you know, I could tick off Red Book and Bob Cott Hall, and I can't think of any others that are...
I think what you need to add into, your focus right now on the negative piece of it is actually the benefit piece, because the incentives allow for a density bonus. So, when you start applying that, there is incentives which allow him to have no net loss.
And I'm not saying that you're, I'm right or wrong, but, but we've tried the farm land preservation with incentive bonuses, and how many people have used that over the years?
Yeah.
And one?
Yeah.
But doesn't, doesn't the developer have to adhere to some state rules anyways?
And they pulled it.
Not with this subdivision coming in.
Remember that word you mentioned, they, they had the lots to go on size?
Yeah, but Ryan, but he did it, and we got, but out of, in twenty years or more, it's been one time that that density bonus worked, that someone actually rolled with it and used it.
Yeah.
Because he wanted...
That's, I think, a good point, is that's something that we can, we can work on and take a look at it. You know, the plan that we have, preliminary plan, final plan, marketing plan, we can use that to make it one comprehensive, that make it, you know, a little more...
You don't wanna kill them, right? You don't wanna kill them with red tape and bureaucratic...
We don't wanna see that being restrictive for anyone.
Because I guarantee you, what's gonna happen is they'll find a way around it, and you'll be building four-lot subdivisions all over town.
Right, yeah.
And small, and we'll be back to two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square feet.
Yeah. So, somewhere that you can make a notebook, like destructive, maybe, somewhere that...
And, and just, Jackie brought up that paragraph six, it's, to me, it's a little clumsy in the wording, but that's just me. You know, it's, it's the old, so if you can't read it in one go around, it's...
Right, that's right.
There's something wrong with it.
Well, part of what we found out is that the applications that we've put together, we've actually been creating a checklist that goes through. So, as someone who is coming in has a checklist, you know, this, 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 so he checks it out. We've done that for the four applications that we've created for the planning board, and it really has improved the quality of the applications we have coming in. We're not missing stuff anymore, people know what they're required to do. So, we think the application itself is going to kind of answer a lot of the questions that are...
We've gone a little bit over, does anybody else have any questions on?
Sure.
Any other suggestions you have, and we can make it, you know, more workable for all of you.
What do you need from us?
Yeah, this is next question.
Well, the immediate idea from you is that, from your perspective, that you've seen town meetings and what you've...
I, I just think educating as much as possible.
Well, would the select board like to go on record as supporting the Inclusionary zoning bylaw and going forward with it?
Well, we're non-compliance right now, am I right? Going back fifteen, eighteen years, non-compliance, or what is their stick? What are they gonna hit you with if you don't get in compliance, other than...
Forty B.
Forty B.
Now, it's tried thirty years ago.
And then, you know, losing points on, on grant applications.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the bylaw.
Or to support.
Support the bylaw, inclusionary...
All right, so it's only, it's, it's more a moral support, just to be clear.
Well, not for my, I mean...
No, I understand, but I'm just saying, we, we have no official capacity tonight to do anything.
That's right.
It's just to express our, express your support.
Our outside of support for affordable housing, how do that?
All right.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'm a social worker, I need to say this.
There's a motion and a second to support the Inclusionary bylaw, to support the efforts of the housing authority and planning board in the development of an Inclusionary zoning bylaw. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
All right, this is...
Can I give a whole word?
Hmm? All right, wholeheartedly support.
Get that.
Anything to get you happy, anything to get you happy.
I have to remind you.
Yes. All in favor?
All right.
All right. Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Moving on, gentlemen in the black, I saw people coming in. Join meeting with Greenway Committee, CONCOM, CPC, meeting with everybody left in the room. There's no, there's no, there's no any initials that are, you want to take your extra seat, Casey?
Do you think so?
No, I keep those, I need to waste the paper.
I want it.
You want it? I mean, this is literally a meeting with every other town committee and commission that's available. Greenway Committee, CONCOM, CPC, Finance, Con, Council, oh, Finance Committee, down two lines. Town Account, Moderator. Welcome all, review town meeting warrant articles. Do we have those?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
There's printed hard copy, which is the corrected copy.
Oh, right here.
Which a last article added in that library.
Oh, got an extra article that we hadn't talked about before?
Correct.
Okay. I guess article one is that Don Greenway Committee that just won't go away.
Yeah.
Just keep coming back.
So much fun.
Does, do we, do you, have you seen the article?
[laughing]
Have you seen this version here?
These other...
The, the Z of the...
Many of us have seen it many times.
The, the Z version of this article.
At least.
Yes.
Forty-two. This is the result, I think, of many of our best minds applying themselves over the last number of years.
And obviously, this requires a two-thirds vote.
Where do you see that?
The end.
We're not bonding it on.
Yeah, two-thirds vote.
Why are we bonding it?
Why are we bonding it?
We're bonding this, we're borrowing it.
If the value is being shorted.
Short-term borrowing.
Short-term borrowing.
And bonding is two-thirds vote and an election vote.
So, this must be short-term.
This is short-term, this is a borrowing.
Borrowing, okay.
I just want to make that clear.
I'm glad you brought the distinction, I keep, I forgot it. All right. So, any problems with the article?
No.
Uh, Robert, you just...
Two more, number two. Has this been approved by the town authority?
Several times over.
Um...
Right, right. I think I've seen this go back and forth several times.
As I read this, unless the town is approved for this land grant, two hundred twenty-four thousand four hundred, no funds are transferred. So, what if the funding comes in, pathetically, at two hundred twenty thousand, four hundred, four thousand less?
I think it doesn't go.
Correct.
All right, there's no... I mean, that's my understanding, because it's very specific, it's not...
That's how I'm interpreting it. Another question I have is the importance of applying for the land grant when the transportation bond bill has allocated five hundred thousand dollars already for the acquisition of the rail trail. So, are we expecting...
I can speak to that if you want, Bob.
Sorry?
I can speak to that if you want.
I'm not finished yet.
Okay.
Are we expecting, are we expecting a grant agency to award us money, knowing another agency is willing to give us a half a million dollars?
Well, I'm gonna tell you about the, the transportation bond bill. That is money that was put in there by reps and senators without any backup information, the last minute of the bond bill, to get it passed. The governor's office had made it specifically clear that he only releases the money out of that, although I won't call it anything other than pork barrel appropriations, unless he approves it from his office. It doesn't go through a process with Pioneer Valley Planning Approval or anything. This is money that has no, no plans, no nothing, just a pie in the sky appropriation that doesn't go well in the governor's office. Case in point, the last bond bill, there was five hundred thousand dollars in it, it did not. We had, also in that bond bill, we had three hundred eighty-five thousand to repair four streets down the ponds, which was not authorized because it was not, it was something that was allocated the last minute and put into the bond bill, with no plans or anything like that. And the governor's office, on these particular projects, do not look favorably at them, because there's no substantial support with plans and, and how this thing's gonna be developed and controlled. So, I'm gonna tell you, this is the third time the bond bill's been passed with money through the railroad, and I was involved in the first two of them, trying to get the money allocated, and asking the money out of the governor's office, versus all the other money, which has plans and programs and support from a process backing them up. This is just last-minute appropriations to put in a bond bill to get it passed.
Okay, it's also, thank you. It's also in the three hundred thousand dollars for works and repair, East Street Bridge, and five hundred thousand for reconstruction.
And that money was all thrown in the last minute.
Okay.
And I don't anticipate seeing any of that money.
But have we asked for it?
Yes.
Have we asked for this five hundred thousand?
We've asked for the money in the past.
No, I mean now.
No, we have not.
So, then somebody in town meeting can say when, or why not, or why aren't we asking for it?
Well, I, I can put you to a letter that was written from the governor's office on all this extra money that they put in the last minute, and it's highly unlikely. I think you guys talked to Peter Copec, you can elaborate on that.
I'm just not wanting any surprises for...
Wait a minute, Robert, let me get Michael to jump in on that.
Could someone explain where you're talking about this five hundred thousand bond?
It's not in, it's not in here, it's, it's coming out of...
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's not here. Michael, do you want to address that?
Go ahead.
As I understand the situation, I agree completely with everything I've said. In addition, we met, me, myself, Charlie, and other members of the community, Representative Copec, a month or six weeks ago, just to explore what this appropriation, so-called, meant. And he, more or less, a little more, well, legally, at, more or less, had already said, that it's a very long road from the appropriation of the bond bill to money approved by the governor's office. Not impossible, but a very, very long road, and required plans in place. It was important.
Oh, you covered that base.
Okay, there we go. Is that your comment? Is that, that, is it? All right. Do we want to vote on the articles individually, or do you want to do them all?
Okay, what's your pleasure? Is there, well, first of all, Becky, do we have enough money to cover the articles that are being presented?
Yes.
Mike?
When I say articles, all the articles.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
But this one only deals with CPC.
The first article, but I'm talking about the articles.
All of them, right. All right, so, well, then we'll do them all, do them all at once.
Only one question?
Yeah.
Article five, I haven't seen it, I think.
I think, which one is that?
Tired Dump.
Tired Dump. We're gonna come to that, Robert, let me do them in order. And article two is Greenway also. This is the appropriate for thirty-nine thousand for costs associated with the acquisition of the Greenway, which is coming directly from Community Preservation. And we have that money, correct?
Uh, yes.
All right. Any questions on article two? Article three is the housekeeping one for the Community Preservation Committee to divide up their funds into the required categories for administrative and other things, on the undesignated account. Any questions there? Article four, uh, article four. Somewhere along the line in last year's budget, we forgot to appropriate twenty thou, transfer twenty thousand dollars from the capital budget into the operating account to pay the master plan committee. They have run out of money, the master plan is gonna come to a screeching halt unless we appropriate this money. We are going to transfer it from, did we end up taking it, where did we take that from?
Capital stabilization.
Capital stabilization. One of the stabilizations accounts that we just managed to put a hundred thousand dollars into, and you're now gonna take twenty thousand dollars out of it, which is why it's there, but wish we hadn't had to dip into it so soon. But we need to, and that's a two-thirds vote also. Questions on that? We, we've talked about that one for a lot. Article five, this number has changed lately, is...
That's the exact dollar amount.
Oh, okay. At some point in time in the past, prior town administrators took money from the tired dump account and put it into the general operating account, and should not have. We need to put that money back. We have to correct the mistake that was made, so we need to take that four thousand seven hundred dollars out of our operating account this year and put it back into that tired dump account so that it's balanced. And it should not have been done, it should not have been taken. I guess we were all remiss for not catching the fact that it was done, but now it's time to fix the problem. Is that, is article six still going on?
Yes.
That, oh, six. The thirty-five thousand dollars from free cash to upgrading the fuel tanks, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, it's to upgrade the fuel tanks and bringing in compliance with D P's most current regulations, such as double wall, um, double wall piping, vent recovery, and emission recovery, and repairing the pumps.
Otherwise, we run into problems, right?
Well, we're the other business of pumping up fuel.
Yeah, and then we can't save money for buying stuff in bulk and transferring it. And then, next is article seven, which is new to me tonight, right?
Yes.
This is a library for six thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents, for its enumerated repairs that they say they need.
Well, you have...
Yes.
Mom needs management.
You can let me speak.
Yes.
I'm Beth Hutsell Smith, Chair of Library Trustees. We have been, as you know, working hard to bring you more library hours and more library staff, and in the meantime, we let some of our maintenance, we, we've just been getting up to scratch on maintenance. So, the issues presented to you are about compliance and safety and clarity and cleanliness. The park has not been cleaned since the weekend. We have been lighting, it, it isn't just light bulbs that were missing, but the valve is, I'm not an electrician, but we've had an electrician over, and it's been getting dimmer in the library. So, we had to have, excuse me?
The light went out.
Yeah, the lights went out, as they say, it is Halloween, probably, the children's room, so we had to have some replaced. All of our exit lights were not up to code, so we had to buy them, get them replaced. And we've been, the big project that we've been, that we need to do, that we haven't done, is the repair where we had leakage through the hoopla, we need that repaired, and the drywall and the paint get done, to the new mall.
Landscaping.
And landscaping, that was, we had a discussion here about that, and we had a discussion with the highway department, and we recommended that we get that done by someone outside, and we had it done by Peter Curry, and we paid the members submitting the bill to you.
So, it's already paid, it's already paid?
No, we're submitting the bill to you.
But it's already, the work's already been done.
You can't do it that way. You can't do something you don't have money for.
Wait a minute, I'm not an expert on this stuff. We came to you guys, that's what we were told to do.
No, no, you came to the finance committee, I think, in last year's budget. What you, that should've been in your budget, if you spent it, or you're taking out a trust fund or... trust fund, or whatever. But you can't go out and buy, buy something that you don't have money to pay for, and come here and give us a blank bill.
Has any of this other work been done?
The lighting and the emergency exits, because those were safety issues.
So the six hundred and five and the two eighty.
Excuse me. The exit lights are a proposal. It's a quote, yeah. You can see I'm just going to stand in.
No, I, Convy went to my house 10 minutes before I left to come here.
Okay, so why are you speaking?
And I can, my only concern is, what is your operation budget, your expense budget for that building?
Well-
I mean, do you have a number?
Honestly, there hasn't been one.
Well, there's got to be some money.
Vicki, do they have an expense budget for-
We do, but it's not-
These are items that weren't budgeted.
Right.
That have come up either recently, or we were told to take care of, so that they could get up to speed, especially with regard to the landscaping.
No, I agree with the last pick of the point.
We have to do the lighting.
Yeah, one second.
This is FY12, we don't have FY13 in front of me, but, but there was $26,126 per unit for that one.
I won't, I just started writing, do you have another copy?
I'm not here to spend town money furiously, but I need to know what that $26,000 is.
Stop thinking.
You know, I mean, that, is that, that's for grants? No, I understand what you're saying, but I can't, in all good judgment, to get this in the ninth hour and say I can approve that, not knowing what you have for expenses and what was allocated for the fuel, for, for light bulb replacement. I mean, we need to know that.
Vicki, we can't tell what you-
I'm going to go grab the budget request that they submitted from last year, because we did do a breakdown.
All right, just, but they should, the question is, is there anything left in their expense budget for this year?
FY12, I just, I just brought FY12.
Oh, you don't have thirty?
I don't have that, I haven't either.
It's not available in the building?
Well, I, what-
Would you please?
Sure.
What I'm saying is that there's money that allocated for certain expenses, that you went through a budget process.
Yes.
With the Finance Committee. Convy told me they never gave you what you asked for for the landscaping, so I understand that.
That's true.
But you should be carrying money for changing light bulbs and balances.
Yeah, there should be something.
And I just, these are maintenance items, not capital items, and these should be capital items.
We, we did attempt to submit capital items last year, and they were not approved.
But that's, like, the-
A $754 dollar carpeting cleaning should be a regular maintenance item too.
Okay, and more than five years since the carpet's been cleaned.
No, 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 no.
Okay, and we're attempting to create a plan on that today, but we're attempting to create a plan of maintenance, like a five year-
We have a five year plan.
And I, I agree with what they're saying, but the point is, I just want to see your expense item. And, and, and these might be good things to add up, but if you don't have it covered in there, this is in addition to your expense item to cover.
But it, it doesn't help me, for you to tell me that right now, because I, I just-
I just can't focus on something without seeing what you ask.
All right, we're going to get the numbers, so we're going to take it.
You know what?
But honestly, we are so careful about expenses.
No, no, that's not the issue. We're going to take a break from that for a night, we're going to come, take a pause and come back to you.
Okay.
Because Vicki's going to get numbers, Reggie's going to get budgets, let's, let's deal, we got, we got to keep moving along, so we're going to deal with some other issues for a minute. Uh, signatures. I have a payroll warrant, I'm on the signature line. I don't know, the signature line.
We just have a bill warrant here, no payroll warrant.
Well, maybe that's staying for no good reason.
Okay.
Payroll warrant was last week.
Yeah, so that's why-
So we have a bill warrant here.
Why is there a bill warrant and a payroll warrant? This is that, this is-
There's no-
There it is. I got a-
We have more than two here, I have two.
All right, one second, we jumped over something, we're going to write back. We got a treasury warrant for 1112 for $111,071.90.
I'm looking to approve.
There's a second, Jackie, what's going to be you? All in favor?
I-
We're going to come back. Thanks, sorry I scribbled on that.
Is this something that Jackie can find, because-
I think, is it not the budget? It's not a payroll warrant, it's a-
That's the, that's the-
Oh, that's why it works.
Twenty-nine thousand for FY13.
Twenty-nine thousand?
Twenty-nine thousand, I have written $10. Reggie, you gave the, I don't have any more.
None of that's been expended? None of that $29,000 has been expended?
Oh, for FY13.
Yeah.
I think, well, I didn't start my data, but I can-
I don't know if you got, they didn't get, they got a little-
They asked for it, too.
They only got, they got, they asked for that.
But the question is, is there any of that left?
There's, because it's fuel and anything else, but what's in that?
What is the breakdown of expenses? What breakdown? No, it's just it, it's $26,000 for expenses. So, I mean, has got any money left in there that they got to take in? Um, that's part of it. Finance, finance, do you have a blind budget for the library? How much is, is there expensive money that's left?
Yeah, I lost it too. I'm wearing my glasses.
Just a blank number, there's no makeup of it.
You give me such a good thing.
Yeah, it's just a gross number.
You have your hundred, do you have your ready?
Right here. They got $24,020.
So why can't they, they have the full amount. They got the twenty-nine. They got the twenty-nine. The last one that they paid for?
What did they ask for?
No, no, they didn't need to, it's a doubt, just a gross number.
One question we're just finding out now, is that you were given a 14.5% increase in your expenses last year to cover these items.
John, let's see if John, how much you had to save as left?
This is through 9:15, I think our balance is roughly $26,000, we expect 13%.
So they've spent, they've got $26,000 left in their expense line?
It's talking about $4,000, this is, again, through 9:15.
So, I mean, they can't be off by that much.
Well, the only thing I see in here that, that is not covered in your budget, I can tell you right now, is your expenditures on the cupola. Or again, you should never have money for.
But they got $26,000 left in their expense budget? You were asking for $6,200?
Nine fifteen.
You don't have a, well, you don't have a test.
John, what they're asking for is in Article five on the warrant.
Article seven.
Or seven, sorry.
Yeah.
There's seven on there. And it's, they're asking for $6,269.62 for free cash, for carpet cleaning, repair exit lights, repair drywall, and the cupola, landscaping, lighting, and painting. They've come with an article on the warrant.
So we can make this.
That's what I would say, and they've got money in the expense budget. They got to take it from there before we're going to make a transfer from free cash.
From what I see, you gave them a 14.5% increase in expenses this past year.
Because they gave us an extra.
Because, oh, for the extra, yeah, but that's in the expense.
No, that's in the expenses, not in the wage item.
So, yeah, we gave you more.
So, so they've expended some of the money, obviously, if they submit the bill, it'll get paid, and the rest of the work, if they do the appropriate paperwork, we can pay it from there and not do it on our-
When's, when's the springtime?
Well, they'll probably be in the springtime.
There'll be probably another meeting in December, January.
Yeah, yeah, January.
January, we're going to wait.
So there'll be more opportunity to put it on.
Well, the problem is, they've expended some of the money already.
Only, we had to put lighting in the children's area, and, and we had to do the landscaping, we requested it, we told them to do it, even though we didn't.
They, they, they had to do a lot of major trimming and grooming and stuff like that, that was overgrown.
You folks did it?
No, they did, we just didn't have time to do it.
Which is why we need to get the buildings all under a centralized maintenance and centralized structure, so that somebody's responsible and not this fragmented stuff. But that enough said on that issue, but-
And the cupola and the drywall, that's all, and the painting of that has been, you know-
Well, my comment on the cupola, I, I told Convy back before that you should be going to, that was an unforeseen thing, you should be going to Finance and see if they can transfer some money to take care of that damage that was, that was unforeseen. It's like $2,400 or $2,500.
But why wouldn't we take that expense money for now and see if they can make it to the end of the year, if they run out of money at the end of the, before the end of the year, then go to Finance to get it back if, if there's not enough?
The reason I'm saying is unforeseen.
Right. Right, but I'm saying, we got, they got an increase in the budget.
You know, when people come to us, and it just happened before, is that if there's money in the expense line, we say-
Use that.
Use that first, and then come back at the end.
Right.
So we know the budget is-
Sharpen the pencils.
We want you to spend the monies, and then do your regular, when you're running short-
Is there something I'm missing in the description you had with, so just keep spending, submit-
No, 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 no. Spend money you have, you have allocated. Spend money you have that been allocated, don't go over it.
Well, the unbudgeted items, that's the question, these are unbudgeted, so we spend it.
Well, fair question, we have no way to know what your budget of items are, because the only thing it says here is expenses, $29,910, and it represents a 14.5% increase over last year.
So it almost seems like they were-
I don't have a breakdown, I don't, I just know-
I don't know what made that number up. There had to be, you know, maintenance, there had to be repairs to light bulbs, there had to be-
Shelby and-
I bet you that's, I bet you some of that's the-
That's just the, you know, cupola was, is, is, it leaked because of-
I mean, it leaked a long time ago.
And, you know, we've had repairs on the furnace, and we've had the air conditioner, we've had so many equipment-
Yeah, but you, you, you've also had two or three different directors over there, and you need, and I know it's been difficult, but the point is, you have a budget item you have to follow, and if you know you're not going to fall within those numbers, you need to start notifying. This article here are maintenance items, and, and this should be capital items only. And I'm sorry, but that's the way I've been trained as department head, this is for capital items. These are maintenance items. You need to go to Finance.
The operational stabilization fund could fund that.
Yeah, but not, not this early in the season. Now with some, now with the department that has 20, about $4,000 in their expense line.
So when, when you come to the end of, towards the end of the fiscal year, you have a reserve fund, and you also have the operational stabilization, unless they have two sources.
What I think people are missing here is that when you present your budget as a department, you line up what you, what that expense money is, there should be, and it's for maintenance, it's for operating your building, not for capital items.
Okay. I gotta say, honestly, I think we've been given conflicting instructions on how to, how to present this. That's okay.
But, I mean, it's not, it's not the end of the world, because you can come back.
Well, it's not the end of the world, because we're only going to spend money on necessary things.
That's not what I'm saying. Why doesn't everybody come in the door and do the same thing you do?
All right.
Then everybody should come in and give additional requests for maintenance items.
I think the point is, you don't, actually, you have the money.
You have the money.
And you can just spend it, like you said, and we don't need an Article seven. Right? It's just a procedural thing, we don't need an article.
Right, you have enough money in your budget, we don't have to cover it with a town meeting article at this point in time.
Yeah, that's all.
So, at this point in time, we're going to-
I'm sorry for reaching time.
No, 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 this is good, this is good.
Say, that, that was my discussion with Barbara, and they're working on a maintenance list of everything that's got to be done over at the library, items that were not included in the budget that they submitted.
Right, and this is, and we're, we're, we're just going about it, we're all in the same place. At this point in time, I would accept the motion to pass over, well, do we need to talk about the warrant any further?
No.
My suggestion would be, would we accept Articles one through six and pass over Articles seven, or can we delete that off of there?
Yeah, I can delete it out of there.
You want to delete it off? Does it, so do you want to make a motion, is we got any Articles seven?
Make a, make a motion to remove Article seven?
Second. There's a motion to remove Article seven, and a second, any further discussion?